West will lead us in prayer and then Mr. Henson will lead us in the pledge.
Father, we thank you for all the many blessings in life that you've given us. We pray that you'll be with us during this meeting tonight. And any decisions we make have a positive impact on our schools, both now and to the future. We ask that you be with our students, teachers, and school staff during the summer vacation season. May they all return back to school safe. Pray for the sick in our community and for B-DWL, may they be restored to a measure of good health. Most of all, Father, we thank you for Jesus Christ and the sacrifice and the cross. God guard and direct us in everything we do, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. That leads us-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to our July Board Meeting. Move to item three on the agenda, approve the minutes of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three regular session as received. Motion by Mr. West. Seconded by Mr. Mays. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, approve the agenda for the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular session as you have in front of you. I don't think it's changed anything. Motion by Mr. Sherrill. Seconded by Mr. Henson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five, that public comment period, that is going to be a new item on every agenda going forward. We've talked about it maybe briefly, but that is part of the legislature movement in the last session in order to give individuals in the community an opportunity to voice their opinions on our actionable items on our agenda. Each governing body across the state will have to follow this. If you will take a look or if you read them, we've got two revised policies that we'll approve tonight. But revised policy down there in item ten, D. one point four zero two, notification of meetings, and revised policy one point four zero four, and E, their appeals and appearances before the board, revolve around this item here that we're talking about, number five. The meeting has to be, we have to present notification of the meeting forty-eight hours before with an agenda. We are doing that on our website, and that will be the only place that we actually put it out there. They, anybody could come here and call and get a copy as well. But we'll make it available for the public on our website, the Board of Education website. And then for this public comment period, the way we've structured the policy, if you are okay with it tonight, first, if they desire to participate, we have a thirty, we'll have a thirty-minute period set aside each and every meeting. No one's here to participate, then we'll go on. But we ask that they sign in and disclose the item that they would like to discuss. Each person, each speaker in that thirty-minute period will have five minutes to present their opinion. If there is a group of people, that can be combined. So if five people want to talk about the same item and they want one person to speak, we can do, we can allow that. We've got a timer, and so we're going to try to be as fair and as, and follow our policy as best we can. If it is a hot-button item, and I don't know if we've ever really had these, but you could, the board could blow to extend the period for somebody to keep discussing. But that's, that's the way our policy is designed, and that's, that's the way we'll do it going forward if everybody's okay with it. That's very similar to how most everybody's doing it around, around us. The County Commission, I think, is doing something similar. Some folks are allowing three minutes per speaker. We felt like five would give them a little bit more time to make their point. But still, that, that is capped at thirty minutes, so.
Is that the only ground rules? Language, tone?
Oh, well, it is respectful, you know, any, and maybe we, maybe we have, we, we have the authority as within our policy there. It says the chair has the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who violates state law or does not adhere to board rules. And that's basically present respectful, but respectful. Obviously, you can address any student by name. You can't be specific in anything like that. And this does not govern any disciplinary hearing that could be on an individual nature. That's, that's not under these rules.
Only what's on the agenda.
And again, people are doing this a little bit different. We have a little bit of leeway, but in order, by putting in the item five right there, it gives them an opportunity to talk about anything they want to talk about that's on the agenda. Otherwise, we'd almost have to let them go to item six here and give them a public comment period on that. But that, I don't think that's the case. So is everybody clear how we'll proceed going forward and okay with the policy? Again, that's, that's a gift from our state legislature. But we don't have anybody signed in tonight, so we'll proceed. Item six, consider rebids for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, A, non-ethanol gasoline, diesel, motor oil, antifreeze, and B, dust mops and mats. You have in your packets, and you should have received these as well in your email, the updated bids. We rebid the gasoline, and we only had one bid on it, gasoline and diesel. We only had one bid on it last time. We rebid, we only got one bid this time, but it's our current service provider. And essentially, the markup is less than what the quote was last month. So this will be our same service provider for these items currently. And it is at a cheaper price than what we were quoted last time. That is with Rogers Petroleum. And then the oil and antifreeze, which is on the same bid tab, was bid by two different providers. And those prices are a little bit different. You can see there in your packet. Our current provider is the second, or the third page in this, will be the second bid on the motor oil and antifreeze. And it's a little bit higher. So one thing that we did, we asked David Emerton to make, make sure that these bids are apples to apples. Make sure we're bidding the same thing. And he contacted both providers, and they were in agreement essentially that they were bidding the same thing with the exception. There's one exception. And that is the diesel oil fixed pipe gallon drum, Cheroro Teller. The cheaper bid, bid Cheryl Teller T four oil. The other bid with our current service provider priced T three. Again, T four, I think, is a newer product, maybe a better product, a little bit cheaper. David said we could use that, wouldn't be any issue. And when he was talking to our current provider who bid the T three, he still couldn't even get, he said he wouldn't have been close to this bid either for this T four oil if he had bid a T four. Going forward, we'll try to clean that up just a little bit and make sure, check with David, make sure that we're bidding what we're, what's on the forms, what we, what we need to use.
So they can use the T four?
They can. Yeah. And it is, it is cheaper in general than a T three. But even had the, our current service provider that bid T three, had bid T four, he indicated that he couldn't compete with that bid either. So that's our- We'll have to do the diesel and the gas, not ethanol gas. We've only got one bid for it, if you're okay with it. And then we'll have to do the motor oil and antifreeze.
I have a motion to draw the run, draw the run on the gas diesel.
I'll second. So Mr. Sherrill and Lynn on Rogers Petroleum for the diesel and non-ethanol gas. Motion by Mr. Sherrill, seconded by Mr. Lynn. Any discussion? Again, that's for Rogers on ethanol gasoline and diesel. If no discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that leaves us with the motor oil and antifreeze. And we've got two bids there, so.
Much motion for Napa Livingston? Say.
I have a motion from Mr. West. Go with Napa Livingston for motor oil and antifreeze. And then seconded by a motion by Mr. Sherrill. Any discussion there? Did I hit all that right? If no discussion, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that brings us back to item B, dust mops and mats. Now, we rebid this one as well from last month. Again, we received the same two bids. And it's my fault. Last month, I did not remember correctly. I don't know if that's the terminology. The, the cheaper bid is the company that we switched to one time in the past. And the service there was lacking, so we had to change within a month. In fairness, we reached out to them again, expressed our concerns, and some of the things that I think we experienced, we would experience again. Again, they are cheaper. One thing, for example, the dust mops that they bring. Our current service provider goes into the building, replaces all the dust mops on the frames. All they've got to do is use them. All our folks have to do is use them. After the first time, the cheaper bid, UniFirst, indicated that they would just basically drop off the mats. Said we would have to replace them, whatever. I don't think they were too excited about going throughout the building and replacing the mats. Our current service provider does that. Every place we have mats, the current service provider replaces them. And when we bid the last time, they did essentially drop them off in one spot. Last time, they did not want to go to Hermitage Springs. They wanted to drop the mats off for Hermitage Springs here and have us take them. They did indicate that they would service Hermitage Springs, but that's kind of what we thought last time, too. Again, it is a lot, it is cheaper. But I think at the end of the day, we're paying for service if you go with our current service provider. I wanted to make that clear. I didn't do a good job of that last time, I don't think.
So they won't do that? They won't? They're not going to change all that stuff, this, this UniFirst?
The onsite service of UniFirst is horrible. That's the general complaint I've got for walking all the way.
Does you go copy the above, or can we go with? Let me go first bid.
Mr. Henson made a motion to accept industrial mat bidding. And then that was seconded by Mr. Lynn.
They ought to really take us back.
How much is the difference? How much more are there?
Any work from two to three thousand dollars, depending on how much we use in total.
What was the problem with the last time they didn't change the?
They would not. They just dumped them.
Right, they would dump.
They just threw them.
Rugs and everything. And then we would, we would do, we, our folks would have to, at the time, it was Mr. Cecil. So Mr. Cecil, especially at the K eight, was having to do all that. And then, like I said, that lasted a month. And they, they said, no, this is going to be, we're going to drop them here, because they're here. Again, we have a motion on the floor, Mr. Henson, seconded by Mr. Lynn, to go with industrial. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item seven, consider quotes for line wise monitoring software renewal. We've got one quote here, it's the cheapest quote, and the company we prefer to purchase from.
This is the service that we've had for the last three years. It's been previously paid for with Esser funds, and it was on a yearly basis. So we never had to bring it before you guys because it was under the threshold where the board had to approve it. This year, we're having to pick up the tab on that as Esser has ran out. When we contacted our suppliers, we actually found out that if we do a three-year service, it ends up saving the board around two to three thousand dollars, depending on the actual number of licenses we have to purchase. And that fluctuates a little bit by enrollment. But we got those quotes together, and like Chairman said, that's the company that we've done a lot of business with. I felt they gave us a really good quote and price. And in the long run, it's saving the board money by doing a long-term renewal versus a one-year, so.
And that's the CED for technology?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Ashlock.
Say.
Seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eight, consider the following contracts for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, A physical therapy comprehensive rehabilitation of the plant. You have a copy of the proposed contract, and if you recall, we have had a little bit of difficulty getting a contract with a physical therapist. So this is, this is all we've got. I don't know that that's, that's not much different than what we're saying next.
This is the service we've got, and we've got one minute. I make a motion to go with.
Mr. Ashlock, seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. That brings us to item nine, consider teacher tenure, A. Kim Fox, Hermitage Springs. Ms. Monroe?
Ms. Donnet, I'm going to let you speak, then I'll speak after you. I'm not, did she and Miss Alicia have the discussion?
She did the certification, the licensure, and what you're speaking of, yes.
Okay, yes. Yes, I would like to recommend her for tenure. She's done everything she's been asked to do. I think it'd be appropriate.
I agree with her as well.
Motion by Mr. Ashlock, seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion?
I put five years' time aside maybe as a teacher, but she was teaching.
I have a motion on the floor for Mr. Ashlock, seconded by Mr. Upton, to approve Ms. Kim Fox, Hermitage Springs, for tenure. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item ten, consider the following policies on first reading. Second time, I'm not going to read all of them. Mr. Edwards, he's, he's got a book back there that he would like to address each and every one of these. I think the short version, Cliff notes is, they're all TSBA approved, is driven by, mostly by the state legislature, correct?
Thank you, legislature.
I'm sure I can wait and split them up here.
Most all of them are revised. You do have the one new policy that are in item G. Motion by Mr. West to approve on first reading.
Say.
Seconded by Mr. Henson. Any discussion? If no discussion, I'll call Rose since it's first reading for these policies. Mr. West?
Aha.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Ashlock?
Aha.
Mr. Sherrill? Mr. Lynn? And I vote aye. Motion passes.
That's just the first reading.
First reading. Most of the changes are fairly small. I tell you, you do have the one new policy, but another meeting- You might want to set up the time.
You can buy me lunch.
Maybe that mail would be slower like I could love it.
So that will bring us to our principal report. Ms. Donnet?
So our positive engagement, our school is doing a Lego theme this year. All teachers are going to send a Lego postcard to each student to their home welcoming, welcoming them back to school. We thought the kids would love that. We are planning on an open house event for students and parents on August the first from four thirty to six. This will be Lego themed as well. Parents will get to meet and greet the teachers and see where their child's rooms are. We have a huge number of girls that went out for a new volleyball team. The total right now is around twenty-one girls. Our new uniforms have arrived, and we're really thankful for those. There are general school improvements going on in our building. The floors are almost completed. The tile was laid in our concession stand, which we love. The inmates pressure washed the outside of our buildings, and I was really thankful because they needed it. Tennessee Ready Scores are back. We will begin analyzing and divi, or diving into those and trying to get ready for the new year. Our fall parent teacher conferences will be held from three to six on October the eleventh. And then our spring will be three to six on March the twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donnet. Any questions for Ms. Donnet? Mr. Maxfield?
Lot of construction going on. All classrooms have been stripped away, but we're moving in the right direction there. The old studded bathrooms are under construction and being renovated, so it's been a while. We are actually going to have one of the bathrooms to extend the teachers' break room. We're really excited about that, so we'll have a lot more room for them. Here, we don't have enough room for most of the teachers to fit in there here in the lunchhouse. Electrical panels have been installed. The new portal has arrived and being set up. They were there today, going to finalize them. Everything's going on really good to get the new year started. We will have parent orientation open house on August the first. From five to six P.M. will be pre-K through three, third grade. And then from six to seven, we'll have grades four through eight. Also, our parent teacher conferences will be held in the fall on October nineteenth from three fifteen to six. And then our spring parent teacher conferences, March fourteenth from three fifteen to six.
Any questions for Mr. Maxfield? If not, go ahead.
First of all, I think this is my first opportunity in my official capacity, and I'd just like to thank y'all for the opportunity and apologize for putting the year twenty twenty-two at the top of this. It's obviously twenty twenty-three, so. This past month, Mr. and Mrs. Craghead went to A.E. Conference in Rutgersburg, and Miss Amanda Craghead received her tenure certificate. Teachers are getting their classrooms ready for the upcoming school year. Our building by tomorrow, hopefully, I was told, should be completed on the waxing, and teachers from that point on can set their classrooms up. We've had a very successful summer of basketball camps and seven-on-seven events. All sports enjoyed a two-week dead period, and all sports are starting their fall camps to prepare for the upcoming season. We're getting schedules finalized and getting ready for the first day of school. We had a freshman orientation this past spring so our freshmen could pre-register for their freshman classes. These students and parents got to tour the school and to see where their classes will be located. We will have our freshman orientation for this eighth grade class this upcoming spring. And our parent teacher conferences will be held on October the seventeenth from three to six, and on March the nineteenth from three to six. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and officially welcome the board.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Dickerson? If not, Ms. Monroe?
I really want to officially welcome Ms. Donnet at Verewell as the new principal of Hermitage Springs School and Mr. Mike Dickerson of Lake County High School. Welcome aboard. They've already been really, really busy this summer, along with, of course, Mr. Maxfield. All the construction has really gone well. We're hoping and praying to have everything finalized prior to starting of school. We may lack a little in that, but they're really working hard to get out of the building before school starts. As Mr. Maxfield and Ms. Donnet had mentioned, the electrical panels have been installed, and we are totally finished with that. So we're excited about all the new construction. I'd like to invite all of you to come down there into the schools if you don't care, and on these orientation evenings that they might mention of, we'd like to invite everybody to come. And we'd like to show you the new construction and what all's been done. We'd like at K eight to see the new modular that's in. They're setting it up and trying to get it hooked up now. So a lot of stuff going on, guys. We're really excited. All the teachers are already in the school buildings, working hard as they all do this summer. The principals have worked extremely hard in getting their, it's a job getting the school buildings ready. It's a job. So thank you all for what you do.
Any questions for Ms. Monroe? Just a little update on the kitchen project, the proposed kitchen project, I should say, at the K eight. We've been in contact with Mr. Allen Hill this week. He didn't have anything ready for us tonight. His goal is to have something ready, a plan that we can look at and approve by our next board meeting in August, and then have bids back by September, our September board meeting. One thing we may consider when time gets a little bit closer, because I would like to stick to that timeline, we might consider moving back our August meeting just so we can accomplish- We might consider uh moving back our August meeting just so we can accomplish that. Further we go, the harder it is to get started and accomplish what we're trying to accomplish there and meet the time parameters with the funding as well. So we'll consider that uh as time gets closer, but right now, we'll leave our board meeting for August, uh, the second Thursday as always. If something comes up, just I'll, I'll let everybody know there. Hopefully, that wouldn't cause any trouble for anybody. Again, they're, they're working towards it, they consulted, they've got feedback from the kitchen consultants, so uh he's finalizing the plans now. Any other new business needs to be considered for the board at this time? If not, do you hear a motion? Motion by Mr. Wes? Put it on dial for a last second. All in favor?